Everybody, Tanya here with Mark Bachner. We at Bachner's Realistic Self-Defense and Training, 855 Dyer Avenue in Cranston. Happy to be here.
Thank you for coming, yeah, it's a trek.
Nice, nice place, nice place. Very clean, I have to say, I was impressed.
Yeah.
Very nice, very spacious.
Yeah, so I think the big thing with that is most of our clients are women, you know, and we want to make sure that they're comfortable, they're comfortable being here with a clean atmosphere. You know, a lot of women, it's the big thing, it's the bathroom and it's like the lobby.
Yes, yes, I know, it's true, it's true. It's true, it's true, definitely. So, um, so yeah, so a great place here. Is it for men and women, is it like?
Yeah, give me one second. Kat, is he able to do it without the mic? Is there nobody on Zoom, right? We're adjusting, that's what we do here in business.
That's okay, that's right. I know, I know, sometimes though he does, you cannot hear it, but depending, I know.
Yeah, we got a live class going on right now, so we're multitasking a lot.
Yeah, no, no, great business, it's great, we have, see clients in here, very nice, very good.
So to answer your question, it's for men and women. If you do the fitness kickboxing or weight loss transformations, so if you need to lose 10 pounds, 50 pounds, 100 pounds, we do that. We also have the martial arts of self-defense. And I'm gonna plug myself, we are the number one rated fitness kickboxing and self-defense school in Rhode Island.
Yeah, wow.
Yep.
Awesome.
Over 200 reviews on Google.
Yeah, good, good, good. Hi, Roseanne, thanks for tuning in. Awesome, that sounds good, it sounds great. And, um, so any kids can sign up too, or no?
Yeah, so we have a tiered program. So we have like a program for smaller kids, like five to seven, and then a youth program like eight to 13, and then an adult program. And then we have our fitness kickboxing, which is ages 12 and older. Um, to be totally transparent, most of our women in our kickboxing are 30 plus, like 30, 30 years old and plus, a lot of middle-aged women. Um, you know, because as you get older, it's harder to lose weight.
Right, right, right.
We can't eat like we did in high school.
I know, not at all.
Right?
No, it's true. And it goes right to my stomach, is the first step.
Yeah, you still look good though.
You know, thank you, thank you. But, but, but I feel like it's, and you've always been very in shape, but I mean, it's very, what's the word? Like, I have to struggle just to maintain weight. Even that's work, just to stay at my same weight is work.
You just made 95% of the people watching this very angry at you, right?
No, I'm working at it, but it takes, it's hard.
To keep it on?
To stay, no, 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 to stay the same weight.
Oh, and not gain weight?
Right.
Oh, I thought you said it just falls off.
Oh, no, no, I know people like that.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be nice.
So, you know, so like health is wealth, right? So if you don't invest in your health, you're going to lose it. Right? It's not like a college degree where you get it and you're done.
Right, 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 that's cute, that's a good way.
As we get older, we need to invest more time in it. Because as a physical therapist, like I know that you will spend more time and money trying to fix your health later in life.
Yeah, right, 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 yeah, no, you're right, you're right. And thanks guys for tuning in, I see some people tuning in. Um, drop a comment if you want to say hello, even if you're watching on a replay. Um, so yeah, no, it sounds great. And you sell, um, I see a few little things of like supplements and stuff, so some of that.
Yeah, so we partner with Prestige Labs. So these were supplements, so they're food supplements, they're not medication. Uh, they were made for Olympians. So since we were, yeah, so since, like, listen, everything's about results, so we have to have like the top supplements to help people lose weight, um, you know, have energy. I, I take them, so I've never been more in shape since I started taking them. So, um, the full gamut, the health, so the fitness, the nutrition, the accountability, keep you motivated, is what we do.
Right, good, good, no, it sounds great, it sounds great. Hey Amber, thank you so much, great, good to hear from you too. And, so yeah, actually it's funny, because like just speaking of that, I just put a post on my page recently, like not having motivation, something to affect them, not having motivation versus being lazy.
Yeah, so.
It's very, it's a fine line there, or sometimes they are separate, or any quick change on that, I'm just thinking of it as we go, yeah.
Yeah, so you don't want to succumb to your emotions, right?
Right.
You want to build habits. So when we go on feelings, we stop doing something. I feel tired, I don't go to the gym.
Yes.
But when you have like a coach like us, we help you make like working out a habit.
Right.
You go regardless of how you feel. Once you can learn that, then you get results, right? Because consistency is the key.
Right, that makes sense, yeah. No, because it's true, because like we all could kind of feel tired, or I went to bed too late, or I had a long day at work, or, but it's true, sometimes I think it's even had that set schedule, like you know you have to be at that class, you already paid for it, or whatever, or.
And now I'll give you one up.
Yeah.
If you have a coach checking in on your attendance,
Right, I know.
You're more likely to go.
Right.
Right? So the big thing about our studio, we're not a gym, we're a coaching program.
Okay.
So it's not like a gym where you just sign up and go. Like we coach these women, or these men, to lose weight. Because we know you're gonna hit roadblocks.
Right.
It's much easier for you to be like, hey Mark, what do I do? And I go, hey Tanya, do this.
Right, right, right.
And you're like, oh, okay. It just makes it simple, you know. A lot of people out there, I mean obesity rates are.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Right? Through the roof. Um, but my job is to help women understand that. You can lose weight.
Right.
You just need the right information and the right people who care about you.
Right, right, right. And even just having that joint effort too. So it's like, so I mean, people have done it on their own successfully, I'm not saying it's not possible, but I think it would only help to have that connection with someone, someone to check in with, someone that's motivating you, someone that's almost holding you accountable, I should say.
100%, the biggest, from my perspective, the biggest thing that people miss with fitness is being held accountable by somebody else.
Right.
Right? This is why a lot of times when people just sign up for like a fitness studio, they, or like a gym, they don't lose weight.
Right, right, right.
Right? A lot of people are just donating to these big box gyms, where they just spend a little more money and then get results.
Right, right, exactly. I mean, I, I know, I had a thought I was gonna say, I was connected to all this too, is, um, oh yeah, which is, how about when, I just feel like there's a research on this too. Most people who lose weight do gain it back. There's a big percentage that will gain it back, sometimes gaining back even more.
Yes.
I forget the reason why, but I did look into that.
So a lot of times it didn't become a habit, right? So maybe you're getting ready to go on vacation, you're going for a wedding, so you crash diet, you do things that aren't sustainable, right? Uh, and you've reached a goal. However, when it becomes a habit, you do it regardless.
Right.
And just like anything else, like especially your health, if you're not consistent, you lose it.
It becomes a lifestyle, you're making it your lifestyle to continue to stay healthy.
And when you do that, you maintain your results, or you get better results.
Right, right, exactly. And, um, so yeah, so tell us about the, uh, the campaign. And, uh, you're running as an independent.
Yeah.
Running as an independent, and yeah, so whatever you want to share, start with, and what made you decide to run, and you know, so yeah.
So let's start with that question, right? So I'm running as an independent for the city council in the special election for Cranston. Uh, what made me run for it is, um, it was always something I thought I would do, uh, and then when the circumstances happened, I threw my hat in. Now, why did I do that? Because in my whole life, I've been helping people. First as a self-defense instructor when I was 16, then as a physical therapist, a fitness coach, a small business owner with my employees. I help people, that's the, like, the essence of my life. This is the next logical step. Uh, and the reason I'm running as an independent is I believe that you shouldn't, a council man or councilwoman, shouldn't have to vote how your party wants it to vote. You should just vote how the people want you to vote, right? Because you're elected by the people, not a party.
Right, exactly, right, right.
And a lot of times, um, if I was in a party, I have to vote how the upper people want me to vote.
Right, right, right.
That's not how I run my business, that's not how I am. So running as an independent allows me the opportunity to just do what's right for Cranston, for the people, right? With no, you can't pressure me, right?
Right, 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 right.
I'm like the, I'm like the hidden gem in the election.
Right, right, that makes sense, okay. Sounds good, sounds great, you have a fundraising event coming up as well?
Yeah, so we're doing a fundraising event, um, at the Santa Maria de Prada Club. I don't think you can get any more Italian than that, uh, if I feel like in Cranston.
I was just there.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, it's catered by Ralph's Kitchen. Um, so we, I mean, we have a good turnout. The cool thing about, uh, you know, this is that I have people supporting me who are independents, who are Democrats and Republicans.
Yeah, that is, yeah, that is, you have that blend, as you're saying, yeah.
And the reason they do that, you know, the reason they do that is because of how I've treated them over the years.
Right, right, right.
Right? So, I mean, there's people donating to the campaign that aren't even from Rhode Island.
That's right.
You know?
Or not necessarily from Cranston.
Not from Cranston, I mean, you've known me how many years?
Right, right, since we were young, bro.
I've been pretty much the same person the whole time, right? You evolve, but you treat people in a certain way, uh, and then it comes back to you.
Yeah.
The saying is, uh, if you can help enough people get, you know, if you can help enough people get what they want, then you can get whatever you want.
Okay, yeah, that makes, that makes sense, okay, yeah.
Because it's about how you treat people.
Sounds good, sounds good. So, um, what's one of the first things you want to tackle? Like, you know, you're hoping to win, we hope you win. What's one of the first things you want to do?
So I think, so I think the biggest thing, you've got to have the right expectations, right?
Yes.
I don't expect to go in there and then, you know, I'm, I'm one of nine people, right? To make a big, uh, a big change right away, because it's other people on the council, right? It's not a dictatorship where I go in and I just change everything. Uh, but I think holding, I think holding people accountable. I think, um, making decisions based on data is how you need to do things, right? And I think, um, you know, one of the things is reducing the taxes, right? Like, in a business, you have to look at your income, your expenses. Like, you can't spend money you don't have, right?
People do.
But now, when, do you know what happens when government does that?
Right.
They tax the people for more money, right? So when you have those experiences as far as running a, running a school, running a clinic, whatever it is, uh, you have, you have these, these skills that help you make decisions, right? And I think that's one of the biggest things is as far as like, okay, I live in Cranston, I don't pay more taxes than I do.
Right.
So the, the city council, the mayor, shouldn't be spending as much money as you're spending, right? Let's just clean that up. Let's help people make, you know, uh, easier life. And then let's just make decisions based on the people and not a party.
Right, right. So, I mean, are you willing to comment? Do you think that some money's being spent in some of the upper level positions in the school department? Because I think it is, but I don't know if you want to comment or not.
I know for a fact it is.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the Briggs building alone costs, I don't know how many millions to run in one, a lot of the taxpayers don't realize. Cranston taxpayers, drop someone's name in the comments who lives in Cranston or tell your friends to watch your video. A lot of people don't recognize how much that Briggs building costs to run. I think audit needs to be done to know, do we need all those positions? Curriculum director, assistant curriculum director, I'm making that up. I know those are not exact titles, or maybe they are actually, who knows by now. But you know what I mean? Superintendent of Schools, I've talked about her more than one time on here. Sorry, I don't know if, you know, you like her or don't like her, but she's very overpaid. She doesn't have a doctorate degree, um, there's been some missteps along the way, unhappy parents, unhappy teachers, and that's against the story. She puts in a request yearly for a raise to school committee, it just gets approved. Sorry, you don't have to comment, you know, but the viewers know how I feel about that. But I'm just saying, I mean, this is something that are, you know, currently going on, so.
Yeah, and, and I think that those are the things that have to be addressed or brought up. Now listen, here's the thing. I'm not a politician, right? I don't want to be a politician. I'm just a guy who knows how to make decisions, who's done enough in his life to say, hey, okay, this is right and this is wrong. And if somebody wanted a politician in, in this council, Ward 6, see? Don't vote for me. If you just want somebody who wants to do the right thing, listen, the integrity of being a martial artist, of being a business owner in Cranston, my name's all over the business.
Right.
So if my business sucks, or I'm not a stand-up person, people are gonna review me.
Yes.
There's a reason we have over 200 5-star reviews on Google.
Right.
It's because of the way I do, I handle my business.
Right, right, right.
So like, I, I can't be pressured, uh, to make decisions that aren't right. Um, and, you know, I just feel like I'm just gonna do the right thing.
Yeah.
I, I think that's all we want.
Right, right, I know, it's true. And the honest thing, and yeah, exactly, as you're saying, yeah. Yeah, no, it sounds great.
It's a novice thing where the people who are elected by the people would do what the people want.
Right, 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 exactly, exactly, yes, exactly. And, um, so what about you, people who look at you as, hey, you know, you never ran for school committee first, or you, you know, you're very new to this, um, why should I vote for you? You know, what do you say to those people?
Yeah, so I think we vote based on the person and the experience. Running for school committee doesn't make you qualified to run for city council. Being a doctor of physical therapy, helping patients, so when patients come in, I gotta assess them, I gotta diagnose them, I gotta make a solution right away. Same thing with the business. Listen, as a martial artist, I've been helping people ages 5 to 90. So I have all these, uh, attributes and characteristics that I've learned to make the decisions that are needed, right? And honestly, I don't think being a politician is even a plus in this day and age, right?
Right, right, no, it's true, it's true.
I, I think it's just, it's just down to the people, listen.
Yeah, no, it's true, it's true.
If politics worked, we wouldn't be in this situation.
That's right, I know, that's a laugh, but I know, you're right.
I mean, there's, there's truth in humor.
Yeah, I know, I don't want to laugh about it, I mean, I'll laugh, always either that or cry about it. I mean, it's true, it's bad, it's not a good thing we have going on, even outside of Rhode Island. I mean, just internationally, it's pretty intense, it's, it's not good.
Yeah, and I think that, um, I think this is where the change comes in. Now listen, Cranston has more unaffiliated or independent voters than Republican or Democrat. Why? Because people don't want to affiliate, right?
Right, 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 alright, I didn't realize that, yeah, I believe that though, yeah, sounds right.
Yeah, I think that, you know, everybody's different. I think if you just do what's right for the people, right for the city, you should win.
Right, right, that's right, that's right, exactly, move the city in the right direction.
I mean, where do you think the city's lacking?
I'm not living here anymore, but definitely with some of the spending. As an outsider, and I don't follow it 100%, it's more, I would, for me, I tackle that, um, that student.
We're gonna lower that.
That's okay.
We're technical different, see, this is what happens in business, right? As a business owner, you're a firefighter, you're a firefighter. So, uh, we're just adjusting right now.
As a teacher too, I'm a former teacher, as a teacher, you kind of put out fires. But yeah, my thing in Cranston, and then from not living here, I just spent time here with the, yes, where I already expressed about the superintendent of schools, and about some of, some of the individuals at the Briggs building, which also is connected to the schools in Cranston. Those issues, high taxes, um, you know, some unnecessary spending that I haven't confirmed, but I've heard about, so.
Oh, I've, I've been told.
Yeah, I've been heard about some of that. So I mean, obviously there would be some things that I think could need, oh yeah, definitely. But I mean, I'm sure there's more, you know, I think everything needs, you know, every area needs, um, improvement.
Hey, let me say this, yeah.
I should know more, but that's, I know the basics of what I already kind of said.
Yeah, I mean, I, listen, I think overall, Cranston's a great place to live, I think it's run well. However, there's always improvements that you can make, right? And I think having an independent on the council of Republicans and Democrats, right? I, I can vote on how it's supposed to be, what would be the most beneficial to the city.
Right, right, right.
I mean, let's think about this. Let's say, let's say you've got four Republicans on the council, three vote one way, and one votes a different way. How much pushback or like, how many comments are they gonna get?
Yeah, I know.
If an independent, if an independent's gonna do it, what are they gonna say to me? I'm Tanya, I'm independent.
I know, right, right, right.
So I just have more, I just have more leeway to do, do what's right.
That's true, no, you're right, you're right, and that did already happen, what you just said. I'm pretty sure it happened, I don't mention names, but it did happen.
No, there was a councilman who conflicted to the other party.
Yes, 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 exactly, and I, I know, it's true.
And he's very active in that party.
Right, right, right.
And honestly, let me tell you the truth. If you're elected as one party, and then you switch to another party, how is that right for the people who elected you?
Right, right, right.
Right?
I just support him, but I know what you're saying, I get, I get what you're saying.
And this is nothing personal against him.
Right.
But if I vote for you as a Republican, and then you become a Democrat.
Right, I know.
Right? I, I like the guy, but I have nothing against him. I'm just saying as far as like transparency would say, if I said, hey, Tanya, I'm gonna give you this program, you pay me for this program, and I switch the program, what are you gonna say to me?
Right, right, no, I get it, yeah. Would you have been better off just going as an independent then, after that?
I mean, listen.
Would that have been a better role to do?
I think it's better than going to the opposite side.
Right, right, yeah, so I would have been a better, maybe better.
Or do this, I'm still Republican, but I'm voting the way I want.
Yeah, there you go.
Right? But again, and I'm not blaming him, but there was a lot of pressure coming now.
No, I don't blame him either, yeah, I don't blame him either, yeah.
You know, but this, this.
No, I know what you're saying, yeah, no, yeah, no.
This is the difference between a politician and a business owner.
Right.
I don't intend to be a career politician. I have my business, I have my dream job.
Right, right.
I have my books, I have my podcast, I'm a physical therapist. I have all that.
Right, right.
I'm doing this because I want to make a difference.
Right, 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 exactly, exactly.
And that's nice, right?
Yes, and I was very positive, I mean, yeah, it's nice not to have a politician type of person.
I mean, is it also nice when I answer your questions directly?
I know. Or able to answer every question on my list, and not even ask, give me the runaround.
Yeah, no, so.
That's not good.
Listen, like, when you're true.
Doesn't happen all the time, but I, but I see how some politicians do.
Yeah, when you're.
And it's annoying, and some don't, but go ahead, Tanya.
When, no, no, you're fine, when you're true to who you are, you just speak your truth.
Right.
And here's the thing, when you speak your truth, people respect you for that.
Yes.
Even if they don't agree with you.
That's right, that's right, because I know you're being, what's the word? You have integrity, you're honest, you're, yes, exactly. I think that's why I get people tuning in here too, and I get a lot of views on the videos, even on a replay. People are like, oh, Tanya will, you know, ask the questions, and, so my expert, right, thank you. My next question was about that Democrat and Republican thing. Did you have a feeling that some of the members on the current city council maybe didn't want you running?
I mean, who would, right?
But, but, but you want to explain that, or not explain it?
I mean, it's, it's basic math. Uh, if you have one Democrat and one Republican, they each have a 50% chance to win, right? When you have an independent coming in, now you all have a 33% chance of winning, right? So, um, yeah, they definitely didn't want me running, I don't think that, um.
When you say "they," do you mean your other opponents?
I mean, would you? Wouldn't you rather run against nobody?
Right, but that's what you mean, right, but I thought you also met the current city members. Did you mean it against them, or no? The current city council members too, or no?
I have not met with the current city council members. I have met with people of each party.
Okay.
And I will say, there was one party that definitely told me not to run. And here's the thing, Tanya, when you tell a martial artist they can't do something, they go and do it.
I know what you're saying.
Right? Like, that's how we're, that's how we're trained.
Right, right.
You know, imagine as a physical therapist, if I was like to a patient, I was like, Tanya, you can't walk right now, don't even try.
It's just so, I know, it's not encouraging at all.
It's not encouraging, so, so in this, here's the thing, right? I, I come from the world of like optimism.
Yes, I know, right, right.
All, all great leaders instill optimism in their clients or whatever. So like, all great leaders instill that optimism. As a martial arts coach, a fitness coach, as a physical therapist, I have to be optimistic, because I'm leading these people to who they want to be, right? And, uh, someone was, one of my friends, Rance Baziano, she owns, uh, Phoenix Ave, Tattoo and Wellness Center, uh, Phoenix Ave? Yeah, yeah. She's like, Mark, like you're an honest guy trying to operate in a non-honest world, right? It's so different.
That's how I feel, but yeah, yeah, sometimes I know.
It's so different, like, and so sometimes you're just gonna look at things and you smile, right? Like, this is how people are. And I'm not saying anybody in general, I'm just saying this world.
Right, right, right.
You know, which is, which means this is, why do you want somebody like me, who can bring the integrity, and I can answer your questions?
Right, right.
Listen, I do a podcast.
Yes.
I might not agree with you, but I'm gonna respect your opinion. And I'm still gonna, at the end of the day, we're still gonna be friends.
Yeah, that's right.
Right? There's no backstabbing, there's none of that.
Like, we can agree to disagree, and people nowadays just take things like to heart. They just, they, they can't handle like, what's it called, like critical criticism.
Right.
You know what I mean, it's not good.
Yeah, and here's the thing.
I'm not saying everybody, but you know what I mean, you know.
As a, as a physical therapist, as a fitness coach, I need to tell you the truth, right?
Right, 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 right.
If I don't tell you the truth, that you're unhealthy, and you're gonna die, and you're gonna have a stroke, you're more probable than not to have a stroke or diabetes. If I don't tell you that, who's gonna tell you that? Right? That's my job. You pay me way too much money, it's for me to lie to you.
Right, I know, no, it's true, it's true.
And if you, if I'm elected to the city council, like, I'm not gonna lie to you.
Right, right.
You know what I'm saying? I have people, uh, listen, I have people requesting signs, people like, good, like, like, can I come to the fundraiser? So we have a lot of support, more than people know.
Right.
Uh, which is super cool.
Someone right here, hi Veronica, hi Mark, I took this self, I took this self-defense class a couple of years ago.
Amber, thanks. Yeah, so we teach a lot of women's self-defense classes.
Do you remember her?
Uh, I do, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I actually, I was, I've been teaching self-defense seminars since I was a senior in high school.
I know, I remember, my goodness.
At URI, uh, yep. Went to URI eight years, got my doctorate in physical therapy.
That's what I was gonna have, so, why are you saying Dr. Mark?
Yeah.
It's like you're a doctor of physical therapy?
Yep.
Alright, okay, I didn't know, I've heard of that before, but I didn't know.
Yeah, so all, pretty much all schools, I would say now, in order to be a physical therapist, you have to get a doctor. you have to get a doctorate. Kind of like a chiropractor would be a doctor.
Yes, that's right.
Right? So yeah, I have my doctorate. Now, again, at the end of the day, I'm just Mark.
No, but no, but still, it's great. I mean, you sound like a great candidate and unique.
I would say I'm definitely, how many candidates weren't cut up sleeves on this interview? Right?
That sounds good, and I love the picture by the rise, I posted a picture on my page of you and your mom years ago, like, good old Stonehill, I assume, right?
Stonehill, yes.
So we both, I went to Stonehill, Matt, Jamie, you were younger than me.
As a side note, Stonehill still has the same windows they had when we went there.
I know, that needs a change.
Just letting you know that.
One change, I know, I noticed one day when I was driving by a couple of years ago.
Yep.
Oh my goodness, it looks the same, it's a little dated. But you and your mom, what a nice picture, you know, us girls with the father-daughter dance, we didn't really get that, we didn't get the nice, that was a great picture.